We'll call the meeting to order and I think that we can each say the pledge at home. So stand up, sit down, whatever works, okay? And let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to America.
And to the republic. Which is one nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Okay, now, roll call. Dinah Dumbres, I am present. Michael Martinez.
Aye.
Pam Doobie. None. Mike Lancioni.
Aye.
Rich Young.
Aye.
Joan Lewis. Joan, are you here? Can you hear me?
He's here.
Okay, Jeffrey Gunning. Okay, so as of right now, I am going to announce that we have a forum present according to our roll call. Now, in opening this meeting, I just want to remind everybody that we're opening this meeting and running it electronically or a virtual meeting according to the order that was given by Governor Holcomb. The town is able to do this in order for us to keep maintaining social distancing and for the health and safety of everybody who is on the town council or potentially anybody from the public who would like to be part of the meeting. There is going to be, we're going to have no actual public comment at this meeting and we're holding the meeting electronically because there are several issues that needed to be commented upon and voted upon at this meeting. I sent a little bit before the meeting started, maybe 15 minutes, a new revised agenda to everyone. And that, on that agenda, and on that agenda, if you opened it up and saw, what I did is I eliminated all the other report givers who generally participate in the meeting, their names off of our roll call. And then I added, actually added to the ordinances and resolutions, Section B. So not only do we have the short-term rentals regulation, ordinance 2020-02 for second reading, but in addition, there may potentially be a couple of resolutions with regards to, and this is something that Mr. Gunning has prepared, and the resolutions have to do with our functioning, in other words, right now remotely, and handling some various different things according to, you know, government guidelines. One of them has to do, of course, with ratifying actions under COVID-19. The other one has to do with, you know, functions of us as employees or contractors. And the third would have to do with the council president acting to execute, in case needed, any kind of bid acceptance and so forth, in case something should come up with our refuse contract, even though we did, I know we voted last month, but there might be an issue. We're going to see what takes place. Then, under new, I didn't add anything else for the new business. That stayed the same. Mr. Gunning has included a bit of a report, I think it was underneath, just restated something. It's in the minutes that he said last time. So he said that they really doesn't need to do another report for us unless we want to hear more. And there will be no communications, I don't think, because we won't have, either take a look at something. And we will end up with a council comment and adjournment, so.
That might be.
Anybody have any comments on the agenda?
That might be him here to Dinah. Let me just see. Yep, is that you?
I am present now.
Okay.
Okay, good. What are we hearing in the background?
I think that's Rich. Let me go figure and see. I'll mute Rich again.
Okay.
There we go.
All right. All right, so any comments from anyone else on the agenda?
No, Julie, I did have a comment. Dinah, is with the code enforcement under the Agenda 7A. Do we want to share with the team that job description at that time? Because I don't know if you've made additions since the last time I submitted it to you.
Um, no. Actually, no. We can discuss that when we get down to that section because there's been no kind of meeting for that.
Okay.
Anything else for the agenda? Okay, then in that case, let's move on to the minutes of the last meeting. Joan sent everybody a copy of the meetings, making minutes from the March 14th. I wrote on the agenda the 3rd, my mistake. That was from the 10th. And have you all had a chance to review these minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so were there any additions, corrections?
Nope, look good, it's submitted to me.
Yeah, I saw nothing.
Okay. Was that someone else saying something?
That was Martinez just saying I had no comments or updates that I needed.
Anyone else? Nothing? Okay, so I.
I don't have a copy of the minutes.
Oh, you did not get a copy of the minutes. Okay, Joan sent them late this afternoon, so, okay.
Well, I called her and she didn't call back. Yeah, I left a message at the office. I would have gone down and picked them up, but.
Okay, well, I have a printed copy, but I just printed it off like a few minutes before 7:00 for myself to have here at the table.
Just go ahead.
We'll, we'll be able to get a copy to you. I'm sorry, but that you don't have one right now at hand to take a look at. Among the others, we're there, so you, I hear that there are, the others had no other comments to make. Can, would someone move to accept these minutes?
I'll move.
Michael Martinez moves to accept. I'll second.
Michael Martinez moves to accept the minutes. And who is that? Mike seconded?
Sure.
Mike seconded, Mike Lancioni seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm going to do this by role so that we make sure we hear. Dinah Dumbres, aye. Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Okay, did Pam come on? No? Okay. Rich, what do you want to do?
I just abstained because I have no copy of it.
Very good, okay. So three aye, one abstain, okay, and one is not here, so, all right, three of five. All right, so we have adopted that where minutes have been accepted, so we can now move on to the reports from the clerk treasurer.
Well, she's unmuted and she's here and her audio is connected, but we can't hear her. I messaged her, but I haven't gotten anything back. So Dinah, you might need to just cover what she sent.
Okay, here we go. Let me just make sure here. Hold on one moment here. What was under here? Okay, Joan submitted three, I don't know if you saw, but they also came via email. There were three sets of vouchers that came through. Okay, so we have, just bear with me for a minute here. Hold on. Make sure what I have over here. There is accounts payable registered for, this is for salary. This one is for payroll. Okay, and Joan has a total for the payroll was, I think, $10,275, if I'm not mistaken, over here. That's payroll and net wages. $1,275. Who else? Hello, who is that now?
Nobody.
Nobody? Okay, I thought I heard something. Then there is, so I know that we'll have to vote probably for each of these individually. Payroll, has everybody listed out? Is getting salary? I'm just not sure of the, okay, a total amount at the bottom of this page, so actually reads $23,033.48. And then that is listed of the various different funds this comes from, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out whether this is. Joan, can you, if you hear us, is that $10,276 for all the wages? Okay, I'm going to try, is Joan on the phone or on the internet?
She's on the internet.
Okay. I'm going to try to reach her via her home phone and see if I get anything.
Good idea.
Okay, bear with me for a minute. I have to pull this off.
She wants to be a millionaire, like pulling a friend or something? Rich, I'm going to put you back on mute for a minute.
In case Joan can hear us, but we can't hear her, Joan, I'm dialing your phone number. Okay, good. Okay, Joan, so can you explain? And I could put you on speaker so everybody will hear you from my end. Okay? All right, here we go. I'm putting Joan on speaker. Go ahead.
It's wrapped up individually so you, so you wouldn't get them mixed up. It says accounts payable register at the top, it says AP registered badge, March 31st, 2020 gross payroll. And if you go down to the bottom, it's $23,003.48.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. So this is all, do you all have copies of this available to yourselves? For yourselves?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we need to have someone make a motion to accept this and approve these vouchers?
I'll check, I'll motion to accept these vouchers.
All right, Michael Martinez moves to accept these vouchers, to approve them. I need a second.
Lancioni with a second.
Okay. Joan, are you hearing this, Joan?
I'm hearing it.
Okay, very good. Okay, Mike Martinez moved to, to approve these vouchers. Mike Lancioni seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is Rich?
Yep.
Okay, Mike?
Mike, Michael Martinez says aye. I agree.
And Dinah says aye. So we have four approving. Okay, these vouchers are approved. Let's move on to the next set, Joan. You, could you present the next set, please?
One, two, three, additional vouchers. And the total amount on that, and you, everyone has a copy of that. I'm hoping Rich has one.
No, because Rich did not have access to the computer, I guess, to print them off?
Yeah, I heard he called to halt the town office, but I wasn't there late this afternoon.
It's already.
Yeah, you, you came after I left.
Okay.
About quarter after 2:00.
Okay.
Everybody, you know.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to the March.
Okay, March additional, okay.
The total amount on that is $10,964.55.
Okay.
You want a breakdown?
Everybody except Rich has a, a breakdown, I believe. Correct?
I can read it. I can read it for him.
Okay.
Okay, that would be electric for streetlights, $36.25 for the garage, $101.60 for heat, and electric, $40.48. Our telephone, $160.39. And for the white ditch restoration phase two, our second invoice for the engineering was $10,518.75. Of our, a printer problem that we had, we paid $52.50 to get it corrected. Fuel for, for the truck, $39.08. And for Chase credit card service, we purchased the Adobe so we could make changes to our documents when they come in, and that's $16.04 a month.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Grand total of $10,964.55.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Now I need a motion to accept these vouchers to approve.
Lancioni moved to approve vouchers as noted.
Okay, I need a second.
Martinez seconded.
Okay, Michael Martinez seconds, Mike Lancioni moved, Michael Martinez seconded to approve the vouchers for additional, additional March 2020 vouchers. All in favor? Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Lancioni?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Okay, Dinah Dumbres, aye. So that's four ayes. The vouchers are approved. Okay, let's move on to the third set of vouchers presented by Joan.
Okay, that is the April vouchers. And with the April vouchers, I'll read them quickly. Okay, AE boy, this is for the printing, we have, so have check printing where we could write them. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $105 for rent, and $3,471. That will be for the April fire protection. And $4,735 for Long Beach Police Protection. $3,776 for refuse service for April. $158.86 for telephone. Membership into Lawyers Association for Attorney Gunning. It's through the Indiana Municipal Lawyers Association, $100. And reimburse that for copies for the Eureka litigation, $11.58. And his first quarter retainer, $1,500. And then we go to the Department of Waterworks for water for the garage, $9.49. Water for Kincaid Park, $9.49. Rend us for travels back and forth through the bank and the post office, $20.88. For office people, $96.87. That was for, mainly for the ink for our epse and copier. And, and we have the Fort County Building Department for inspection fee, $400. And, oh, okay, that was for December 2019. They forgot to bill us. And now we have another one for March, $750. And Comcast for internet, $79.69.
Hey, Joan?
What?
Question. I'm probably just missing, you have Comcast telephone and fax for $79.69, which you just said, right? You also have AT&amp;T, which is five for the, for the top, for telephone and fax.
Wait a minute.
I didn't.
Wait a minute, let's go back. At the top, it's telephone and fax, AT&amp;T. Now, this is Comcast, and this is, oh, it's in your account, don't go back to account number. It's all in one account number. That's for.
Okay. It's just the appropriation that's the same, kind of like identification, right?
That's, yeah, our internet is separate.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Baker Tilly is doing the annual report for 2019. And Baker Tilly's, our county, which was the final billing for our budget, they're a little late in getting it to us. A grand total of $20,884.18.
Okay, any questions from anyone? No? All right, I need someone to, if there are no questions with regards to any of these vouchers, I need somebody to make a motion to accept and approve.
Martinez needs a motion to accept and approve.
Okay, Michael Martinez moved to accept and approve the vouchers. I need a second.
I tried to second it, but I'm unneeded.
Okay, right, okay, Rich Young, seconds. All right, all in favor? Mike Martinez? Michael Martinez? Approve Mike Lancioni?
Martinez, aye.
Martinez, aye, but how about Lancioni?
Aye.
Aye, Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbres, aye. So that is four approved to accept these vouchers for payment. Thank you, Joan. All right. Okay, Joan, I'm going to keep this phone on here so that you could make, answer questions in case you need to answer, say something as we go on, okay? All right. Let us move on to the next section, which is the ordinances and resolutions. So we have today a, an ordinance, 2020-02, which is, let me find, I'm looking at my paperwork here. There we go. Okay. Um, I'm announcing that ordinance 2020-02 is before the council for a second and final reading. And I have to read a communication to the entire council from the Plan Commission, which was sent to the council via the clerk treasurer earlier today. And that says, "As Acting Secretary of the Michiana Shores Plan Commission, I report to you that on April 7th, 2020, the Plan Commission approved the council's amendments to the zoning proposals contained in the document titled as Ordinance 2020-02, An Ordinance Amending the Special Use Provisions and Creating a Short-Term Rental Permit Safety and Security Program of the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana. And I sign this as the Acting Secretary of Plan Commission for the Town of Michiana Shores." Mr. Gunning, did you want to say something or add something at this point?
Only to explain that with that announcement and communication, that is the triggering event that makes the ordinance 2020-02 become a matter of law. And with that, you have received just seconds before the meeting, if you have been able to retrieve it through email, the, the redraft of ordinance 2020-02, which amends the special use provisions and adds what was previously known as ordinance 2020-01, creating a short-term rental permit safety and security program of the Town of Michiana Shores. This is up for second reading and final approval. And the reason that you have the document emailed to you and for consideration this evening is because it is necessary for reasons of publication and other finalizing of the document as to format, that it should be adopted on second reading. The ordinance is almost in its entirety, the same documents combined that you saw in ordinance 2020-02, which came from the Plan Commission, and the amended, many times amended version of ordinance 2020-01, which now appears as Section 2 of the entire ordinance document. The whereas paragraphs have been changed only in as much as the last four whereas paragraphs are new. There may be a few other typographical changes. It may be in the usage of tense, of words, and other minor changes of that nature. For the most part, it reads the same as the two original documents did. If Mike wanted to venture a reading, or if you would trust me to do an abbreviated reading, it would mostly only include those four, I guess we should take the last five whereas paragraphs, unless there would be specific questions by members, I would ask that you take two votes, one vote to amend this form and then to adopt it on its second reading.
Jeff, this is Mike Lancioni. I'm fine with you doing the abbreviated reading. I've read it enough over the last few months. So whatever, as far as I'm concerned, whatever you think is best.
Okay, if there's no other objection, I'll give it an abbreviated reading.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, the title has been modified, but just so mildly, I cannot today tell you what the modification is. The title is Town of Ordinance, the Town of Michiana Shores Ordinance 2020-02, An Ordinance Amending the Special Use Provisions and Creating a Short-Term Rental Permit Safety and Security Program of the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana. The first page of whereas paragraphs identify history that you should all be familiar with. The second page continues with whereas, "At the Planning Commission meeting of March 3, 2020, following the public hearing, the Plan Commission bifurcated the proposal into two parts. One containing amendments to the zoning code to amend and add definitions, which part was continued generally before the Plan Commission, and the other part, which amended the zoning code, providing for a special use provision, which was approved and passed by a majority vote of the Plan Commission and certified to the town council. And whereas, the town council took out the Plan Commission's certified zoning code amendment proposal to add a special use provision to the residential district zoning regulations of the zoning code at its March 10th, 2020 council meeting in the form of ordinance 2020-02. The council approved it on first reading only and then amended ordinance 2020-01 into ordinance 2020-02, explaining that the short-term rental of any secondary residence is not and has not been permitted, a permitted use in Michiana Shores and is a direct violation of law as explicitly stated as such in the current zoning code, Article 2, Chapter 3, Section 22311, Part D, Item 10, which is the definition of tourist homes. The effort underway here will lead to a compromised working solution, allowing for short-term rental of secondary residences in a safe and secure manner, consistent with our comprehensive plan. The balance of that paragraph explains that it's the two previous ordinances combined into one, and that was the intent of the town council when it forwarded on to the Plan Commission. when it forwarded onto the Plan Commission. Whereas the town council's March 10th, 2020 action of amending ordinance 2020-01 into ordinance 2020-02 triggered the provisions of the Indiana Code 36-7-4-607, Subpart E4, mandating it be a zoning amendment, mandating it being a zoning amendment, be returned to the Plan Commission. And whereas the Plan Commission took up the combined ordinances existing as ordinance 2020-02 at its meeting of April 7th, 2020, a virtual meeting necessitated by the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic as governed by Executive Order 2009 of the Governor of Indiana and extended by Executive Order 2017 of the Governor of Indiana and successive orders. And whereas the Plan Commission approved and adopted the amended ordinance 2020-02 on April 7th, 2020, it therefore, by operation of Indiana Code 36-4-607E4A, becomes law when a report is given to the town council as of the report of, as the report of the Plan Commission, approval to the town council, which occurred on April 14th. So that preceded this reading of the ordinance. The ordination provision is that now therefore be it ordained, adopted, approved, and enacted by the town council to add the following amendment or additions to the zoning ordinances and town code of the Town of Michiana Shores as follows, it recites section one, which is the special use language that we've heard before. And section two provides the zoning code of the Town of Michiana Shore shall be amended to include and incorporate in proper form the entirety of the contents of ordinance 2020-01 by amending the town code of ordinances in the residential district zoning regulations by creating a new section of Chapter 3 as follows. And then it sets forth, basically, in a generally recodified form, the short-term rental permit and safety, security program that you adopted as ordinance 2020-01. It does have a revised legislative history, which follows the signature page and includes the general provisions that you amended into the ordinances, uh, both them of them previously. And I will note that what has been taken out is the explicit reference to the state code, um, enacting the ability for municipalities to enact a short-term rental, uh, permit, safety program if they are not doing so within an existing zoning ordinance. With the severability clause, which is sometimes referred to as the savings clause, that provides that if any provision is struck down, the rest of it shall stand as valid law unless it too is specifically struck down. But the references, um, to 36-1-24-18, and the Class C infractions, um, have been uh, removed except in one place. And that is, um, in subsection seven with penalties and fines. In subsection A, it says, "The owner that rents a short-term rental without obtaining a valid permit is committing," and I will ask you just to pencil out the phrase, "a Class C infraction of Indiana law, IC 361-24-18", and the words, and the word "and", so that it says, "is committing a direct violation of Michiana Shore's ordinance." And that language was removed in two other locations, so I missed that one. And, um, the reason we had to take that out is because the Indiana Code scheme that we attempted to utilize, uh, makes it a Class C infraction of the state. And we don't have the power to do that because we're putting this into the zoning ordinance. So any violation of these provisions is a violation of Michiana Shore's ordinances and is an ordinance violation, and then would be prosecuted and processed in that same fashion. Having said all of that, that explanation and reading, albeit abbreviated, although it may not seem that way, um, should stand as the, the, uh, second reading. So I would ask that if there's any discussion, discussion ensued, but at the conclusion, that you first, um, adopt this document with that phrase struck that I pointed out as the final amended version of the ordinance 2020-02.
Okay, this is, uh, Mike Lancioni. I would go ahead and move, uh, to adopt, uh, ordinance 2020-02 as read, uh, with the noted change, uh, that Mr. Gunning, uh, alluded to and noted. Uh, and I would move that we, uh, please approve.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt for just one moment here. We have not voted to amend it yet. Do we have to vote to amend it first?
That is the motion.
Oh, this, so this is, is the first motion to amend, okay?
Yep.
All right, Michael Lancioni moved to amend, uh, Resolution 2020, uh, 02, as it has been prepared by, uh, pouring 2020-01 into this. Do I have a second?
Martinez, second.
Okay. Michael Lancioni moved, Michael Martinez, seconds. Um, all in favor to approve? I will do a roll vote. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Uh, Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbres, aye. We have four ayes to approve the short-term rental ordinance 2020-02 as it has been amended by including, uh, short-term rental ordinance 2020-01. Okay.
All that's, all that's necessary now would be to, uh, receive a motion to approve it in its entirety.
Okay, so I am looking now for a motion to approve this in its entirety, approve the short-term rental ordinance in its entirety. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Rich Young moves? Who's second? Michael Martinez, seconds. Uh, I will do a roll, uh, to ask for your vote. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbres, aye. Uh, four votes, aye, to approve the, uh, to adopt and approve the ordinance, short-term rental ordinance 2020-02 in its entirety after the second reading. All right, good job. Great job, that's done.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I still urgently urge our, urgently urge, that's good grammar. Uh, urge our council to adopt, well, not adopt, hire, you know, an enforcement officer. I know that's in the works, but none of this has any teeth unless we have somebody in force.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have a, yeah, Rich, I think we have a section after this that actually go into detail a little bit more about it, so. Definitely, uh, valid concern though.
Okay, thank you, Rich. All right. We have adopted the ordinance now, so now, Mr. Gunning, you had written to me and mentioned, um, several potential resolutions, uh, '04, '05, and '06. So would you like to, uh, present these to us now?
Uh, I shall, and as things worked out, I, uh, only have, uh, one actual resolution, uh, to present. That is, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the numbering, and for the benefit of the other members, I suggested, uh, that we might tonight, and, and, uh, I've run out of time, um, consider three resolutions. One resolution to designate essential government functions and identify employees and/or, uh, contractors and officials, uh, for that purpose. The origins of that are in the executive orders issued by the Governor of Indiana, where the governor, uh, says that local units are to do, to do that. Um, before, um, I no longer wear the hat of being the town attorney, I will, uh, get something to your council president in writing that you can, uh, consider in future days. I will mention that, um, some communities are taking the charge in the executive orders as being completed when they make the determination through their thoughts and actions. So they're not actually passing a resolution. But I thought it might be helpful through the time and the duration that the executive order from the governor is in place, that you take a formal action in the form of a resolution, and it really amounts, amounts to a little more than, than just designating what are the essential jobs. And for the contractors, that would include your town attorney, would include any special counsel, if I'm still involved through the Uriga case, would involve, um, contractors like the, the garbage service and, uh, the accountant for the, the Clerk Treasurer's office, as well as any other specific, uh, provisions that, or designations that you would make. Uh, in addition, the thought was to have a resolution to ratify actions taken relative to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. What I was thinking there was, uh, I don't know if, uh, if there were any costs incurred in setting up this meeting through Zoom or if, um, Mike Lancioni's gonna have any costs from the Planning Commission that he so capably set up, um. But if that's the case, I thought a,
No problem.
A resolution generally, um, approving that type of expense, you still have to go through the claims process, um, might be also desirable for the record-keeping purposes of the town. And then the last, uh, resolution I do have in rough draft form, so I'm going to read it to you, it's very simple and short. Um, I'm going to number it, uh, next in succession in the email that I sent out, I had it numbered as, uh, Resolution 2020-06, but we'll renumber it to, uh, 2020-04. This is a resolution authorizing the council president to execute, execute the bid acceptance or the contract for refuse and garbage service. And it reads, "Whereas the town council opened bids for refuse and garbage pickup at its meeting on March 10th and selected Republic Services." And whereas it stated its purpose, or it stated its reasons for selection as outlined in the meeting minutes of the March 10th meeting. And whereas it was found that while both of the bidders submitted a completed Form 96 with supporting materials, only Republic complete, or compiled, compiled, complied, excuse me, with the specification requirements to submit insurance information and the required e-verify affidavit required by both our ordinances and by statute. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the council president is authorized to execute either the bid acceptance or the contract for refuge and garbage, garbage service.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Mr. Gunning?
Uh, yes, it, uh, being a resolution, it only requires, uh, one reading and one approval. So you can entertain a vote to, uh, accept and approve that resolution.
Okay, I need a res, I need, uh, a motion to accept the resolution, uh, whereby the council president executes the big bid acceptance into a contract for refuse and garbage service. Uh, who will move?
So moved.
Rich Young moves? Who will second?
Lancioni with the second.
I'm sorry, can't hear.
Lancioni with the second.
Okay, Mike Lancioni, seconds. Uh, all in favor, Michael Martinez?
All in favor, aye.
Okay, Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Rich?
Aye.
Dinah, aye. We have four, uh, ayes. The motion carries that, uh, that authorizes the council president to execute bid acceptance and or contract for the refuse and garbage service. Thank you. All right.
I will send out a, a paper copy or an email copy of that, uh, to you, Dinah, and that one should be signed, uh, by you as council president and countersigned by the Clerk Treasurer. So all you would need to do would be to sign that and deliver that to the Clerk Treasurer's office.
Okay.
With regard to the ordinance, uh, 2020-02, which like Mike Lancioni, I'm tired of citing that number, um, we should really, uh, I'm gonna propose or suggest that, uh, each member that voted for it, um, take a copy of the signature page and execute it and send that to the Clerk Treasurer. And each component part then will be attached, uh, because we don't have the ability to just pass it around the room and have everybody sign it. Um, and that way, the Clerk Treasurer will then be able to make a photocopy, uh, with signatures, because the law requires that Clerk Treasurer have two copies, so she'll have the original and a photocopy to be maintained in her files. And I'll tell you that, um, I will lift uh, excerpts from the ordinance and specifically those provisions that set out the, uh, fee to be paid and the fines. Um, and I will get that language to the Clerk Treasurer because that must be advertised in a newspaper. And with that, I have no further ordinance or resolution matters.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gunning. Okay, I'm just making notes here for publication. Okay, very good. All right, thank you. So let's move on to our next topic, and that will be the, uh, we have listed as new business, and that is, we, under this, we have code enforcement officer as well as lead pickup for the town. So code enforcement officer. Any thoughts, any suggestions, any questions, any, um?
As I said, this is Rich Young.
Yes.
At the last meeting, we really need to have a person who lives here, at least to start. You know, we- You know, we have experience with our building inspector. Not only does he not live here, but he's a full-time worker, and he's just not around as often as I wished, and I'm sure we all wished he were. So that's my thought.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
I think we have a good candidate that I mentioned, Jim Imes. I think he's still interested. I haven't talked to him in a while.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm gonna piggyback on what Rich says, is that I really agree that it would be good to have somebody who's here, who can literally get out on the streets pretty much on a daily basis almost, to be able to check out and see what's going on. Um, because it does make it hard when somebody is coming in from somewhere else, especially since whatever salary we pay is not going to be very large. And I do know that Joan had also mentioned to us, have we even thought about how much we're going to, uh, pay this person? We haven't discussed anything like that, where we're gonna be getting this money from and so forth, so.
Yeah, this is Mike Lanciaoni. I mean, I fully support it as well. Rich noted, and I think, uh, I think we need to go ahead and, uh, you know, for the next cycle of, of town budget, we need to plug in, uh, whatever monies is necessary to, to get this funded, um, and to make it happen. Uh, and I mean, this person would obviously have, uh, have duties, uh, and, and assist with the, um, the short-term rentals. But, but then, of course, uh, for, for any, uh, uh, infraction or any issues going on, uh, of which there are many. Uh, and, uh, you know, wouldn't bring the position on to be a revenue generator, but, uh, I mean, I do believe that the position will generate revenue just because there's so many, uh, violations going on.
I second that.
Yeah, I think that it's, it's very important. And I know that some of, a lot of the, uh, things that, um, Michael had listed when he was putting together the code enforcement, um, officers, sort of, you know, the write-up and their duties and things like this. I know that Mr. Imes, you know, from the point of view of having been a safety officer, a fire chief here in Michiana, he would be able to address a lot of those kind of things. Um, he knows the community very well. So in case, like as Rich suggested, he may be someone good for that, but, and especially someone, uh, temporarily. And I like Mike's idea that, you know, we do this as, um, soon as we can. Actually, um, we'll have to figure out, together with Joan and looking at the budgets coming up, on what we might be able to do, where we might be able to get this, you know, funding from.
Dinah, Dinah, to your comment.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Michael, you?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
I'm kind of curious, kind of what you were alluding to is where do we start? You know, where can we look at in terms of our budget? Uh, is that Joan gonna be leading us down that path, uh, of seeing where, you know, we could possibly skim some off the top of one area for this? Because it sounds like we have a good guy. Uh, I, I personally never met him, but, uh, obviously money is gonna be a motivator for somebody to do this job. It's not gonna be a volunteer position. So I'd be interested to see, uh, next steps and try to create some, some, uh, revenue for this.
Can I, can I interrupt her or?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Rich Young.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I don't know if you guys, um, Joan thinks we overpay our building inspector. And I know Mike Martinez did a good job of, you know, I think it was you, Mike, that brought up the, uh, the requirements and the duties and all that originally in a proposal. Uh, were we gonna cut back on the building inspector enforcing and give the duty partly to this guy, or was it gonna be the extra duties? The point I'm trying to make, let me, is that, uh, we pay our building inspector five grand. And, um, I know if we offered to cut his salary, he's not gonna like it, maybe retire, but I think we could find another one if we had to. And I like Steve Thomas. He's just not as available as we need somebody. So my question is, are the duties of the building inspector gonna be transferred to this person, which in my opinion is not a bad idea, or make him the assistant, which I think I brought up last time? Or are we going to give him separate duties?
Rich, this is Mike Lanciaoni. I mean, the building inspector has a certain set of codes that he's to enforce. It's all outlined in our codes and ordinance.
Sure, sure.
That's not all of the codes and ordinances that need to be enforced.
Oh, I know.
These two things are mutually exclusive. And so, but I wanna comment on a couple things you, you noted there. And, I mean, the building inspector, the compensation is $5,000 a year. Not really that much when you think about it. I mean, I mean, hell, I pay, I pay our attorney at work, uh, $450 an hour. Uh, obviously, a building inspector isn't making the same as my corporate attorney. But, but, I mean, I would say that for a professional, and Steve's a professional, he's got over 30 years of experience, $50 an hour isn't out of, out of any norm. That's 100 hours of work a year. And, and, and we're asking him to come to the, to the town council and the planning commission.
All right, all right, I'm not gonna argue with you. I just brought it up.
I know, but there's not, there's, I mean, once you take up a meeting time and everything else, there's not a whole lot of time.
Well, I guarantee you, if you talk to Joan, she would tell you that she does a whole lot of his work. And I think she does.
But, but the reality of it is, in today's, in 2025,000 dollars isn't that much money in the big.
Well, I agree, but I just wish he was around more often. But, all right, then let's just say we're not cutting his salary.
Well, you know, first, first of all, let me just interject here too, that, don't forget that, um, because I, the, the fact that we have the, uh, sort of shutdown is something that precluded from the group that was working on the job descriptions from completing the tasks. But, um, I think even regardless of that, you know, the three, four of us can actually immediately be at the telephone or do a Zoom kind of telephone thing anyway. And we could try to get that stuff going as fast as we can on going forward. We could try to do that. But I think that will really help with regards to our building commissioner for this year. And then we'll see what happens going forward. You know, with regards to whether he will actually comply or not comply, you know, and, and stuff. And that might determine what takes place with him and his position. Our big issue right now is, and Joan, I'm gonna, you know, let you speak in just a minute, um, is that do we have any funds right now that we can use, uh, for this? Not planning on using it forever going forward, because I don't wanna use any kind of reserves, you know, on a regular basis. But is there something we can use now? And then we could try to figure out how we're gonna go forward and pay for it in future years. Joan?
No tax dollars. It's gonna have to come from our, um, savings, pensions, and taxes reserved. And, you know, we will be using our reserves.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how long the insurance plans last. That's something I'll have to get with it. That's it. So she's gonna pay somebody.
Okay.
They was the building commissioner. I mean, the budget for the court block, for all the folks that were doing the people's records. More work to follow than he did on the job.
Dinah, we can't really hear her.
Okay.
That's true.
Does this help?
I think that all needs to be put together, and then I can get with the accountant and review the budget and, and the monies that's available. Because I don't think you wanna hire somebody in the following year we don't have money or the following two years we don't have money.
Well, absolutely.
Defeating our purpose, why, why we really want it.
True.
Did Joan originally say, this is Rich Young, that there is no money in the budget, or we can't budget it?
We can budget it, but I have to check with the accountant to see where we can pay that money.
For the first year, right?
No, we don't have anything in the budget allotted to it.
This year?
True, we know, we understand that part, okay?
But you can do it for next year.
All right, well, and I, I know we can find the money.
Okay, so that would.
We have to come up with an amount.
Well, but this year, you will have to do an additional appropriation. And I need to know, it's a, it's lengthy process. I need to know the exact amount of money you think you're gonna pay him. I've made several suggestions, an hourly rate.
Are you saying, excuse me?
Be fair to us and to the employees.
Okay, Joan, so just to be clear, you're speaking of, you're suggesting an hourly late rate for this new inspector? Or for the work that's done in your office? Oh, both?
Well, I think that the, this is Lanciaoni, I think that the, uh, I don't see why we should make it any different. I think it should just be a flat fee of $5,000 for the code enforcer and do it in a similar nature. If we try to say it's an hourly fee, then, you know, that gets complicated. And, and again, you know, you're not gonna be able to, it's just better to do it as a, as a flat fee and just do it at the same rate. Go ahead and budget it. Like I said earlier, this position is gonna generate revenue to basically support itself, uh, uh, you know, for at least, for at least a, a couple of years, um, until everything gets in alignment. So I, I don't see any issue with it.
Mike, I think you're, you're not looking at it the way an accountant would look at it. Uh, the, if he's gonna spend a lot of hours on it, then I think he should be getting a hourly wage. If he wants to be contractors, then let's make him a contractor. And all I have to do is pay him like we do any other contractor. Do not withhold payment, uh, I mean, uh, taxes and social security from it. That'll be up to him to pay, or her.
Okay, so making this position a contractor alleviates extra work with regards to accounting for it and paying money and for our town, correct?
For payroll.
Okay, for payroll, okay.
Well, let, let me inject something, Rich Young here, that we, when we originally changed the building inspector to, however we change it, and that non-reverting fund, the money for Steve is supposed to come out of that. Is that happening yet, Joan?
Uh, no, we're losing money.
Cause it's supposed to be in the fees, the building, you know, the permit fees.
Uh, but I gave that to you, uh, a spreadsheet some time ago. And we took $10,000 from, what do you wanna call it? That should be paid back, but, and we haven't done that. We haven't been able to do it. I mean, you're taking $5,000 right off the top out of that. So if he was being paid hourly, it would give you a better idea of how much, how much we would be spending.
Well, right now, we're talking about one year. And I don't know what the, the right argument is here. But we need, with us passing this short-term rental amendment or, uh, ordinance, which is an excellent ordinance, thank you, Mike, we need an enforcement officer. So however we do it, we need to do it. Next year, we budget the money into the county.
Correct.
Okay, correct.
When, when does the fiscal year for the town flip over, Joan? I didn't hear that.
December 30th.
It's a calendar year.
Oh, it's on the calendar, okay.
But we submit the budget in July.
Right, right.
Well, we can't use it.
What?
We're not eligible to use it till January.
Correct. Well, we gotta get it in there in July so we can use it in January.
Right.
And then we can carve it out between now and then.
Right.
When you don't have someone do it hourly, if he's spending, you know, a, a number of hours on it for this year, he may not spend as many hours on it next year or the year after. Because once people find out that the ordinances are being enforced, then, yeah, I'm sure they're gonna start taking notice and doing what they're supposed to do.
That is a good point. I agree.
Mm-hmm.
You should start with hourly. We can do an estimate on hourly.
Well, let me, let me ask you this, Joan.
Wait, wait, Michael, Michael, hold on, please. Finish, Joan?
You're gonna have supplies involved with it? Are you gonna provide him with a cell phone? I don't know.
Well, that's getting in the weeds.
We don't do that to anybody else.
No, but if he's gonna be keeping his own records, if he has a phone that he can keep it on, it would be advantageous, and all he has to do is print it out.
Good point.
Okay, here's Mike. What are, what are you, what, what's your estimate, Joan, of what you think the hourly rate of pay would be for this position?
Based on what I took off the internet site of, of dictionary of occupational titles, it was in the area of 18 to 22 dollars.
Per hour.
Per hour. And then taxes are withheld from that. Like, um, normal, I shouldn't say normal, but just not, he's a regular employee.
Right.
If people $5,000 or $6,000 or $4,000 or whatever.
Well, just as a comparison, I, I pay.
Mike, Mike, hold on, we can't have, have you speak, we can't hear. All right, Joan?
We should be able to do, if you're gonna give them a flat rate, then that should be a contract, and we don't have to pay taxes or anything on it. That would be their responsibility.
Okay, so a flat rate is the contract.
Right.
Is that how you do Steve Thomas?
No, he was demanding that he wanted to be an employee. And that's the way you hired him, as an employee. Well, we are paying the taxes and everything and withholding, and we have.
All right, well, you know, this is getting too complicated.
Okay. All right, Mike, what were you gonna say? I'm sorry.
My comment is, I pay this market of, of La Porte County and Porter County, I pay non-degreed seasonal staff to dig holes and put plants in the ground for $18 an hour.
Yep, I believe that.
So you're just not gonna, I'm just telling you, you're not gonna get a professional, even retired professional, to, 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 to come out and do this for, for $18 an hour, maybe 22, maybe 25. But you're definitely not gonna get a great.
25 still would give you an idea of what someone is, what they're actually earning.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Offer just this, this year, a flat rate, and then tell whoever it is, it's gonna be adjustable next year. And then we could go with your idea, Joan.
That's embarrassing for the person, because you know they're gonna be busier, you know, the first year we started.
That's why I'm saying a flat rate?
What do you mean hours?
Pardon?
Flat rate for hours.
Or for a year.
Start someone at $25 an hour.
Rich.
Well, I know that you think Steve Thomas is laughing all the way to the bank with his money. Cause you do a lot of his work.
You better believe we do, and we're getting nothing for it. That's on the.
Well, I don't think Jim, I don't think Jim Imes would do, if we hired Jim Imes, then hopefully somebody like him. Um, we're spending too much time on this.
I agree. I think we need to have another meeting just on this.
Well, we need to get this going. Mr. Gunning, are you there?
I am.
What's your idea shortly? Give it to us short.
I just have a, a few thoughts. One, I think it's occurred to most of you, that if you have one individual that's performing both tasks, building commissioner and code enforcement officer.
No, we're not doing that.
Well, if you do that, you have fewer ordinances to change than if you have two separate positions and populate them with two separate people. Um,
Well, like Mike, Mike Lanciaoni said, Mr. Thomas has specifics, cause it has to do with building and zoning. Whereas this would be the other stuff.
Yeah, so then, then you would be required to amend each and every provision.
Yeah, so then, then you would be required to amend each and every provision that you want the code enforcement officer to enforce. Then you just have that administrative task that you have to do through a council meeting, uh, to attend to. So if you have the luxury of Chief Imes saying, I'll do both, uh, that resolves most of that problem. Um, but then you get into a funding problem. In any event where you have to increase the salary or provide for two individuals, you have the additional task of amending the salary ordinance. If you attempt to do it this year, the clerk treasurer will use the term appropriations interchangeably for meaning two different things. In local government affairs, when you speak of appropriations, you're talking, A, about approval from the state of Indiana to spend money for whatever purpose it's budgeted for. So sometimes we refer to appropriations as the approval. In other discussions, we refer to it as cash flow. So you can have the appropriations, but if you don't have the cash to support and expend, then you're missing that key element. And sometimes we mean both when we use that word. So you've got a short list of things that you have to do. You may or may not have to amend your codes to make them specific as to whose role it's going to be. Uh, two, you have to address the salary ordinance if you have a separate person carrying out the function of code enforcement. And then we think of that in terms of the, uh, you know, the additional appropriation or the funding.
Well, what is, wait, what is your opinion on Joan's argument, we pay him hourly and Mike and my argument, we just give him a lump sum?
Well, it doesn't, I think, address one of the problems that exist, and that is, uh, I think you defined it well. Um, the availability of our current building commissioner. So if we pay that individual more, I don't think we're going to get anything more.
I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, but if, on the other hand, you get somebody like Chief Imes who says, I'll do both, uh, and right now it's set up for the building commissioner to be both a building commissioner and a zoning administrator and the code enforcement officer. So if you get an individual who maybe is retired or has some other motivation, I keep saying like Chief Imes, um, then that would seem to be your best bet. You could implement that immediately. And maybe even with the, the limited, um, $5,000 amount to work from with the promise that in the next fiscal year, which is a calendar year for the municipalities, uh, you work out a scheme to pay more. And if they're real aggressive and productive in collecting fines,
Like Mike says.
That will go back into, um.
It'll make money, is, it'll, self-sufficient, I guess, is the right word.
Right, right.
All right. Well, I don't think it, wait, I don't think any of us were talking about him taking Steve's duties, were we, Mike?
I wasn't.
Mike Martinez?
No, I think.
No, we were not.
Yeah, I, it, it, let me, let me just, you know, clarify this for myself. Um, I think the suggestion that you're making, Mr. Gunning, is that we, um, let's say Steve then does his building commissioner portion of his job, but this other individual, be it, uh, Chief Imes or someone else, would handle all the code enforcement. And then it would not, it negate the necessity for us to make any adjustments to ordinances.
No, that, that option, that option would require that you amend all the ordinances because the ordinances are all structured to say either the building commissioner and.
Or the police.
Okay.
That is true. And I, and we can't rely on our police because they're not in town often enough.
Yeah. No.
Dinah?
Yes, Joan, go ahead.
I have a question.
Please.
That means that the building commissioner is not going to be doing, if you separate him, he's going to be doing his own functions and we won't have to do it. We won't have to keep track of everything. That would be up to him. I mean, we're getting paid nothing in the office, which is gross.
All that says is, Dinah.
I'm sorry, okay.
He does not do the inspections. They're all done by LaPorte. All he does is administration and administration mainly being done by us. He puts his name in the meeting permit. He may check something out once in a while. He doesn't read the code.
Well, let's, we're getting, this is going to go on all night. I think we need to, to, to like have some sub-review and of, of what the ordinances are, that we want the code enforcer to enforce, what, that splitting the duties by looking at the town code and then, and then go from there. Hopefully, we're back in a in-person meeting soon. We could probably talk about this till, till midnight tonight.
I agree with you, Mike, but thi- this is why maybe I'm saying make him an assistant building inspector with those extra duties, you know, apply him some extra duties.
Now, there is a good thought.
Well, I thought I said that last meeting.
No, I, I didn't hear the assistant part, but I hear it now and I think that sounds good.
We used to, believe it or not, have an assistant building inspector. Even though the original building inspector, who is quite knowledgeable, lives right down the street from you, Mike, L. Uh, he was very knowledgeable, just uh, not efficient, let me put it that way. And two lacks, but we had an assistant and his name was John Bauer. He was a good guy. But that.
Good idea, Rich.
But I agree with you, Mike. We, we can pick this up. Uh, hopefully when we can meet together.
Or if necessary, we can do a special meeting and just discuss this over phone at the end of the day.
That's a good idea.
Madam President?
Yes.
And you know what, gang? I will try to approach Jim to get an idea of what he thinks he might be worth.
Okay, uh, Rich, hold on for just one moment. I think it was Michael who wanted to say something?
Which Michael?
Who else?
Jeffrey Gunning.
Jeffrey Gunning, I, I didn't see whose voice came up. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, my thought is that you have, uh, at least maybe four, more, but you have at least four roles or functions for what you're talking about. Uh, one is the building commissioner's office. Two is the zoning administrator's office. Three is the code enforcement function. And four is the administrative function, the paperwork function. You can decide through your committee or as a council whether you want it to be two people or four people or one person and then assign those tasks specific to the title and, and accomplish your, your ends that way. I would urge that. But the other thing I wanted to say is if the committee meets, um, by Zoom or whatever means you have, if it's a majority of the committee that's meeting or a majority of the town council or a majority of the plan commission, then you have to treat that as a public meeting. You have to give public notice and make it possible for people to listen in and.
Okay, that wouldn't be a problem, right, Dinah?
Yeah, that wouldn't be, but we can also do it as an executive session or not?
No.
No.
You go to, you go to the executive session statutes and it's not on the list.
That's right. Okay, that's right. I forgot.
Well, that's not a problem for us, though. We're talking about code people. But I, I totally understand what Mr. Gunning is saying because I've looked at our codes for a lot of years and we have a lot of codes that say the enforcement person is this or that, and many times it's our police. And let's face it, they're not that willing to do it.
No.
So we, I agree with him that we're going to have to rewrite or, you know, and we're only rewriting the enforcement part, right, Jeff?
Uh, yes, just the designation.
Yeah. So that wouldn't be that hard, I don't think. But the great news is we're all looking in the right direction.
Yep. All right, any other thoughts on this or do we want to make a motion to meet for this reason publicly?
I don't think we have to make a motion, do we? Jeff?
You, no, you do not.
Okay, all right.
Uh, okay, what's next?
Then if we are finished with this topic, and it sounds like we've sort of stopped here for.
It was a good discussion.
It was a very good discussion, yes. Uh, the next, if I may, then I'm going to move this to the next topic, which was leaf pickup for the town. And I did get people, i- i- are you in agreement that we can move to the next topic then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that was a question. We don't have to do a lot of discussing about it. There was, um, I mean, there have been increases.
One, Dinah, timeout. Are you guys okay with me approaching your minds?
Yes.
To see what he thought would be appropriate salary?
Yes.
I.
Sure.
So just give us an idea. We're not saying we're hiring him.
Yeah, okay. Mike and Michael?
Agreed. Yeah, I just add to that, and whatever he says, we're not agreeing to paying him that either. Right, right.
Okay.
I'm just approaching him.
Yeah, fishing here.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, Rich, thank you. All right. So let's, uh, we'll go back again to that leaf pickup. I've had calls, I've had some texts, I've had some emails, uh, and I've had some inquiries being next door with regards to leaf pickup. So, uh, can we perhaps even put something out as a bid to see? I, you'll be, we're going to need to do something. I don't know what to do. That, um, what is it? Those, uh, the other bid for us, the one from Lake Shore, had said they would be able to include it if we took their other contract, but I don't think we're going to get them if, since we didn't take them.
Especially the way the guy acted at the end.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Well, your, your meeting minutes, this is Jeffrey Gunning, your meeting minutes do have a sentence that says, RTS stated they would honor the leaf pickup bid if you decided to accept it later.
Yeah, but I think we should go out for other bids as well. I mean, we should go ahead and post it into the local, to the local folks. I mean, I think.
There are a lot of landscapers.
Yeah, I mean, Long Beach, Heelys does Long Beaches and, you know, I don't think we'd have to use them, but I mean, we should get.
We had a guy, let me, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mike. We had a guy about eight years ago, maybe 10, probably 10. His name was Ben. I don't know if anybody knows him. He's kind of a independent guy. He took, we did do a contract with him one year. And, and he actually wasn't bad. But it was on a signup basis. So we had maybe 70 people that agreed to do it. So.
I think this should be a, a town-wide effort that would be.
I agree. I agree.
Added and, and build just like rep, uh, the recycling or refuses.
I'm not even a, opposed to charging everybody like our surcharge for the refuge.
Well, we would have to charge.
It wouldn't be that much with 350 houses. And they would not all agree because some of them use their own people anyway.
Right, but it's better than everybody blowing their leaves into the empty lot next door.
And that's what's happening. And Dinah did, you mentioned complaints or comments. Did Sheila Carlson contact you?
She contacted Joan and then Joan sent all the information out to all of us.
There's a guy over here on, um, Brookside, no, Hiawatha.
Yes.
By, um, I, I don't, does either of you, Mike, know Sheila?
I don't, no.
Okay, you, you might have.
Anyway, there was a guy next to her that had his people blowing leaves onto an empty lot adjacent to the creek on Hiawatha. And Ken Posey supposedly, who owned the lots, told this guy that it was okay to do that. And of course, we have no way of knowing that that's true. And but even in our ordinances, it does say that you can do that with an okay from the property owner. And that's horrible. We need to get rid of that.
Yeah, I mean.
So if we had a mandatory townwide, and I've been for this for years, for years, um, pickup. And with 350 some people, I bet we wouldn't have to charge them more than 50 bucks a year.
Right.
Okay, well.
So I'm all in favor of a mandatory, you know, curbside pickup, which is what it would be.
Then let's get cracking on this and get some kind of a bid out so that we could get some information, you know, and do something. Um, right now, all I've been doing is you're going to have to do something until we get something organized. You've got to do it on your own, but.
Right.
Right.
But I think we're talking, I mean, it would be for the fall. It's too late for spring, but we could be all set and prepared for the fall.
Exactly, okay.
But usually those pickups include a spring pickup too.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, I agree, Rich.
And this Ben, he, he actually wasn't, I was in charge that year of overseeing him. And I remember a couple of times there were people who were very upset with him and I had to tell him that he wasn't going to get paid for that. He didn't like it, but he didn't have any choice. But he wasn't bad. He's still around. And of course, we got Mac, we got Heelys. So there are plenty of people. We don't need a garbage company to do it.
No, but we should still put this out for a bid.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
To get, get people to come in.
But it is something that's, the time has come.
Okay, great. Okay.
Unless, unless we could get, but you'd still have to hire somebody, um, a grant to get us a leaf pickup machine. Mike knows more about this kind of stuff than I do. Um.
You never want, you never want capital equipment sitting around for, uh, uh.
One season. All right, I trust you.
Yep.
I trust you. I, I, I understand it. We all have it in our house.
Yeah.
Okay, so. All right, so we have now, uh, then, um, decided that this is something we want to do. We want to put it out for bids. So now I guess it would be up to probably Joan would be working on it and someone else putting this bid together? Yes, no?
Well, the, the law would require that you generate some specifications.
Right.
As to what they're, what they're bidding for. You will also have to make a determination, uh, best guess or best estimate as to, uh, the cost of the entire project for each calendar year.
Okay.
And that amount may then determine whether or not you have to use a formal bidding process where you issue those specifications and publish your legal advertising. If the estimated amount is of a lesser value, then you might be able to use some of the alternate, uh, purchasing methods available in the, uh, the statutes.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, then I would think that we could probably check with, um, like the other communities, like Long Beach, to see how they do it and what kind of specs they put in.
I, I'm going to interrupt again. I'm very vocal here. I'm sorry, people.
Go ahead.
Um, when we had that, Ben, I'm sure we sent out those kind of things. And Joan would know or be able to look it up. I don't know if she remembers.
Joan, do you remember?
I remember when they had it. There was only about, uh, the last time they did it was right around 90 P. uh, the last time they did it was right around ninety people and they charged it the homeowner ninety dollars.
Something like that, yeah. It was that Ben guy, I can't remember his name.
Excuse me.
It was the only time we did it.
No, it was done twice.
Really?
Right. So the other ti- what had happened when we did it by that individual? The neighbors and everybody else would get together and have it under one family that pays.
Oh, and then shove all the leaves.
Right, it would be neighborhood kind of thing. It wasn't all over, but it was, you know, it was a cheating way, but, uh, no, I figured right with doing it.
Townwide.
Townwide, everybody would, whether they use it or not, it's just a refuse.
Yep.
They pay whether they use it year-round or they don't. They pay the same amount.
Do it like a surcharge, like we do with the refuge.
Pays for itself, which means we would not have to, you know, make sure that we had extra money.
Right, right, I agree.
Sounds, that sounds like a plan. Okay, so, um, this is something that we'll work on for the fall then. And, um, uh, I'll, unless somebody else wants to do it, I'll contact, you know, Long Beach and ask them as well. And then maybe we can find something out in our own office, right, Joan? On specs? Okay, all right, well, then I'll, I'll reach out to like Long Beach at least and find somebody else and ask what they do and, you know, how they put their specs together and so forth. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay.
Dinah?
Yes.
What they've done in the past is get a specification and then we can find the company and send these specifications.
Oh, sure, okay.
And they can turn around and bid on it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we can find out from other cities who they have or towns, but we still should send it out to each individual one.
Right. Well, we have our own specifications when we had that Ben. And was it Mac the other time, Joan? Yeah. I can't hear.
I think Joan sort of moved away from her.
She, she faded away.
If it's in storage, then I'm gonna have to have help to go over there and go through those boxes.
Okay.
I know.
Okay.
It's in the office, it's in storage.
Li- listen, I'll just make a couple of phone calls and that might make it really easy, okay? And then I'll let you know if we need to look, okay? So, um, let's, in that case, we know we want to do this, so let's leave that on as a piece of business that we're gonna keep addressing and move on to the next part. Now, Mr. Gunning had said that, uh, he had, um, he really didn't have much of a report for us because he has information in the minutes unless you wanted to say another word or so. And then we're gonna move on to any kind of quick comments and an adjournment. Jeff?
The, the only thing I would offer is that in the Eureka case, uh, because of this, uh, virus pandemic, the Lepore County Courts, all of them, have petitioned the Indiana Supreme Court for relief and guidance. And the Supreme Court for the state of Indiana, this might be interesting to some of you, upon receipt of a request like that, by each and every court, including the city and town courts, will then issue an order. And all of the orders issued for all of the Lepore County Courts and all of the courts is a practical matter throughout the state have, uh, stayed and suspended all litigation deadlines. So there's no impetus for our opponent or his attorney, uh, to be responsive. But I feel that I have positioned us to, uh, send a follow-up letter with the, uh, document requesting the production of documents and records from them to the town, uh, which is going to force the attorney for the defendant to do some work. And I suspect that that attorney's not recovering very much in payment, if at all, from the client. And instead of, uh, turning his attention to doing the work, he's probably going to say, hey, you once suggested we discuss settlement and I said, I'm willing to do that. Um, we may get a nudge that way. So that's what my plan is.
Okay, any questions from anyone?
I had one, but I can't think of it. What the hell was it? Yeah, all right, go ahead.
Okay. All right. So, do I have anyone wanting to make any kind of comments? Counsel comments?
Yes. I, I, this is Rich Young, Michael and Michael. Mr. Gunning is an excellent lawyer. We need to somehow entice him to stay. I don't think we have an alternative. We need a lawyer that knows city law. And he is an excellent lawyer. I've been working with him for over twelve years. I don't know if he can be enticed. I know we gotta increase it. In all the years that I've been a councilman, I don't think we've increased his pay. I know that's been a contention with his wife. And I think we need to entice him to stick around to help us out. No comment, huh?
Well, thank you very much for your recommendation.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback, uh, Rich, and, you know, to take consideration. I mean, is that the only reason why he was resi- uh, residing? Was over there or was there other factors as well?
I have no idea. Well, I think there were other factors, but he has not asked for an increase in his pay in all the years I've been councilman. And he.
I'm Mitch, I'm Jeff, when I were on the phone call last week. I don't know, what, what was it, Jeff? Last week, I guess, you and I were on the phone. And I, I, I discussed the same thing with him as well, Rich. And, uh, you know, of course, it's, uh, Mr. Gunning's decision ultimately, but, uh.
Right.
Don't have anybody right now and, uh, um, you know, as a, as a council, you know, to, to, I mean, we can interview and look for somebody else. But, uh, you know, if, uh, if Jeff's willing to, to stay for a little bit, if there's a proposal or a, a, a number that's in there, then I would suggest that, that, that he submit that and, and then we can look at that and see if it's possible or not.
Okay, good. Mr. Gunning, I hope you're listening.
All right, Jeff, what's your word?
You've been very good for our town. I've been around longer than anybody. And, um, I hate to see you leave us because you, even though you talk too much, you, uh, uh, but you, you are very good for our town.
Okay, thank you, Rich, for your words. Mr. Gunning?
I, if I may, uh, respond threefold. First, uh, thank you all for the kind remarks. Uh, I truly appreciate that. Uh, two is I'm not going to disappear at midnight tonight. In fact, I have a lot of loose ends and lists and notes and things that I want to convey to different members, um.
Well, that's what makes you good.
I, you know, will be doing that and I'm certainly approachable and, uh, I can be contacted. And with this virus pandemic, I, I'm certainly, uh, for the most part in, in one geographic place and with the courts being closed.
You can't leave us.
Right. Um, in, inasmuch as I reported that in the Eureka case, I will remain as either special counsel or litigation counsel or case counsel for the town. Uh, that will be the case until such time as either you obtain a replacement or until such time as, uh, something requires me to go before the judge of this case and, uh, ask for leave of court, uh, to leave the case. So in that respect, I am gonna be around. You, you know, you're welcome to ask me questions and, uh, I'm not gonna turn you away. Um, but I, uh, I don't think that I can really position myself to, um, you know, make a suggestion on a, a different, uh, compensation, uh, package. Uh, but they always say, never say never and don't burn your bridges. So I'll tell you that I'll think about it.
Okay, that sounds good.
I, I totally agree and I hope, I, I hope we can keep you around.
Uh, Mr. Gunning, speaking on behalf of myself and hopefully on the others, you know, we really do appreciate all the work that you've done, you know, and, and where you've guided us, uh, on the things. It's been a pleasure to know you. So, um, I think that it would be nice if we were able to extend this as well, so. Gentlemen, an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Martinez, seconded.
Okay, Martinez, seconded. Okay, Rich Young moved, Michael Martinez seconded. And I will now adjourn, uh, all approved?
One question, one question. Dinah?
Yes.
If we have to do this again next month, will it be the same numbers and everything?
Um.
You may not know.
No, Mike, Mike handled this, so Mike would, uh, let us know.
Probably so, Rich, but, uh.
All right, so I'll keep the numbers.
Keep the number.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 all in favor? Yes.
You got three ayes.
All right, so, um, I am adjourning this meeting at eight forty-eight PM today and look forward to seeing everybody soon when we're out.
Stay healthy, everybody.
Yes.
You, you as well.
Good meeting.
Uh, thank you, Mike, for organizing.
Yep.
Yep.
Okey-dokey, talk to everyone soon. Bye-bye.
All right.
Excellent meeting, everyone.
Thank you, bye.